Good evening. Good evening. Will the members and our guests please take their seats? This meeting will now come to order. As all members have received a copy of the call of tonight's meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. Will everyone please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to the April meeting of the Greenwich Representative Town Meeting. My name is Tom Byrne, RTM Moderator. As all members have received a copy of the minutes of our March 10 meeting, the reading of those minutes will be omitted. I do have one change on page one. After the District One absentee, we omitted District Two. So we'll insert the words "District Two" in the appropriate place there. Are there any other suggested changes to our proposed minutes? Hearing none and absent objection, the minutes as amended stand adopted upon unanimous consent. All right. I notified our district and committee chairs that based upon the reports received, I will recommend the following organization of our call tonight. There are quite a few non-controversial appointments, and so our consent calendar is going to be a long one, and hopefully will save us a lot of time. So at the appropriate time, not right now, I will designate the following items. One, to be placed on our consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar, as you know, do not receive committee reports or have discussion. So I will recommend items 1, 2, 4, 5, 7 through 9, 11, 13 through 19, 21 through 28, and 30 and 31 be placed on that consent calendar. I will recommend that items 20 and 29 be placed on our combined calendar. Actually, I understand, and so I originally suggested items 3, 6, 10, 32 through 34 would then be taken up separately, but I understand that two of those items, item 3 and item 6, were subject to postponement because the candidates had not met with one or more of the committees, but they have met tonight. So I will, and I understand those votes were unanimous. Is that correct? All right, so I will recommend that items 3 and 6 join the list of consent calendar items. All right. So at this point, our moderator pro temp, Joan Caldwell, because the list, I will now designate, along with Joan Caldwell, because the list is so long, I know you don't want to hear me read the list, so Joan Caldwell and I will alternate among the consent calendar items. But if those items remain, meaning we don't have an objection joined by 20 or more members, all that you will hear about the following items is what you will hear now. So I will begin. Did you, did you get that list, Ms. Caldwell?
Yes, I did.
Of the consent calendar items? All right. I'll begin with item number one. This is a resolution to appoint Christopher Ann Thurlow to be a member of the Nathaniel Witherell Board of Directors for a term expiring March 31, 2017. Item two.
Resolution to appoint David Weisbrowd to the Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals for a term ending 3/31/18.
Pardon me?
Can you hear me now? Is that better? Okay.
All right. So items one and two have been placed on our consent calendar. Item four is the next item. That is a resolution to appoint Stephen Rubin to be a member of the Labor Contracts Committee for a term expiring December 31, 2015. Item five.
What happened to three?
Oh, all right, you'll do three. I was going by my old list, I'm sorry.
Item three is to appoint David Detchin to the Labor Contracts Committee for the term expiring December 31, 2015.
All right. Item...
Four.
Number, well, I did four. Number five. Resolution appointing Robert M. Burns to be an alternate member of the Labor Contracts Committee for a term expiring December 31, 2015.
Item six, a resolution to appoint Michael Waysick to the Labor Contracts Committee for a term ending December 31, 2015.
Item seven is a resolution appointing Joan Caldwell to be a member of the Labor Contracts Committee for a term expiring December 31, 2015.
Item eight is a resolution approving the sum of $1,015,000 to various accounts, overtime, temporary services, rental of equipment within the DPW budget, and that's moved.
For snow removal. Item nine is a resolution to appropriate the sum of $215,000 for an account known as maintenance of buildings.
All right. Item 11 is the appropriation of $20,000 to be added to the cost for microfilming of the Planning and Zoning Department.
Item 13, by the way, item 12 has been withdrawn from our call tonight. Item 13 is the appointment of Lyle Givens to be an alternate member of the Flood and Erosion Control Board for a term expiring March 31, 2015.
Item 14 is the appointment, the nomination of Francis J. Bergweger by the Appointments Committee as a member of the Claims Committee for a term ending December 31, 15.
Item 15 is a resolution appointing Glenn Canner to be a member of the Claims Committee for a term expiring December 31, 2015.
Item 16 is a resolution appointing Jane Arno to the Claims Committee for a term expiring 12/31/15.
Item 17 is a resolution appointing Lloyd Hall to be a member of the Claims Committee for a term expiring December 31, 2015.
Item 18 is a resolution appointing Edward D. Dedakis to a term on the Claims Committee expiring 12/31/15.
Item 19 is a resolution appointing Richard Morgenot to be a member of the Claims Committee with a term expiring December 31, 2015.
Item 21 is a resolution appointing Edward M. Maganello to the Claims Committee for a term expiring 12/31/2015.
Item 22 is a resolution appointing John Schulman to be a member of the Claims Committee for a term expiring December 31, 2015.
Item 23 is a resolution appointing Catherine M. Brennan to the Commission on Aging for a term expiring March 31, 2017.
Item 24 is a resolution appointing Abbott Jones to be a regular member of the Board of Social Services for a term expiring March 31, 2017.
Item 25 is a resolution appointing Lloyd N. Hall to the Historic District Commission for a term expiring March 31, 2019.
Item 26 is a resolution appointing Stephen D. Gross to be a regular member of the Board of Social Services for a term expiring March 31, 2017.
Item 27 is the, is a resolution appointing Thomas Scaratti to the Board of Nathaniel Witherell for a term expiring March 31, 2017.
Item 28 is a resolution appointing John Farley to be a regular member of the Alarms Appeals Board for a term expiring March 31, 2018.
Item 30 is a resolution appointing James H. Dane to the Alarms Appeal Board for a term expiring March 31, 2018.
And the last of the consent calendar items that I will designate tonight pursuant to our rules is item 31, a resolution to appoint Robert Siska to be a regular member of the Board of Ethics for a term expiring March 31, 2017. Thank you very much. All right, those items are now on our consent calendar. Is there any objection to the designation of any of those items for our consent calendar? Hearing none, will our district chairs please mark your voting cards? Consent calendar items, 1 through 9, 11, 13 to 19, 21 through 28, 30 and 31. Any need to repeat those? No? Yes, okay. These are the consent calendar items. Items 1 through 9, 11, 13 through 19, 21 through 28, 30 and 31. And proceed to poll your delegation. There were two items that it was believed could be combined for voting purposes, so I will recommend that items 20 and 29 be combined. That requires a motion to suspend the rules. Is there such a motion? It has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules to combine items 20 and 29 for voting purposes. The motion to suspend the rules is not debatable, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of suspending the rules and combining items 20 and 29 for voting purposes, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, that motion has carried. So item 20 now comes before us, which is an Appointments Committee motion, is that right?
That's correct.
Is Candace Garthwaite here?
Okay, yes, I am. I'm finding my motion.
Resolved that the following named person nominated by the Appointments Committee be appointed member of the Claims Committee for the term expiring 12/31/15, Warren R. Stern.
Thank you. That being offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second. May we have the reports on this item?
Want me to go ahead?
Whoever would like to go first. Candace Garthwaite, Chair of our Appointments Committee.
Warren Stern, the newest nominee to the Claims Committee, has 35 years of business law and litigation experience as a partner with Wachtel, Lipton, Rosen and Katz, where he is presently of counsel. Mr. Stern is, Mr. Stern is a trained moderator and arbitrator and advises corporate boards on settlement issues. He is looking forward to being part of the Claims Committee. The Appointments Committee voted by ballot, and we took the top vote receivers to be nominated, and Mr. Stern received eight votes in that balloting process.
Thank you. Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, we met with Mr. Stern last Monday evening. The only thing I can add to what's already been said about him is that he's moved here to Greenwich from Darien in 1994. We saw that as a sign of upward mobility. And our vote on the matter was 11-0 with District Eight abstaining because he's also a candidate for the Claims Committee.
Thank you. Discussion on item 20? Item 29 now comes before us. May we have the resolution on that item? David Tice, our Selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, the RTM, good evening. Resolved that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be reappointed a regular member of the Alarm Appeals Board for a term expiring 3/31/18, Rick H. Brooks, Jr.
All right, that is a substitute resolution, correct? Frederick H. Brooks, Jr., correct? All right. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The substitute resolution on item 29 has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this item? Beginning with Candace Garthwaite, Chair of our Appointments Committee.
Rick Brooks is a longtime resident of Greenwich and has served as a volunteer fireman for 30 years. He's served on the Alarms Appeal Board since 2007. Mr. Brooks emphasized, as did other nominees for the Alarms Appeals Board, that the Board is committed to helping residents use their alarm systems properly and not abandon them out of frustration. Alarm systems save lives and property. Additionally, the Board seeks to streamline the alarm registration system, and so Mr. Brooks has designed a new application form to help meet that goal. He stressed the importance of keeping smoking alarms clean and replacing batteries. Alarm fines bring in approximately $350,000 to the general fund. The vote was 12-0-0.
Thank you. John Harkins, Chair of our Town Services Committee.
Mr. Moderator, guests and friends and RTM members, we combined our items for the reappointments, all of them, including this one, and we voted 11-0-0 to reappoint.
Thank you. Discussion on item 29. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Combined calendar items 20 and 29, and proceed to poll your delegation. That leaves us with the following items to consider separately. Item 10, 32, 33 and 34. So item 10 now comes before us. May we have the resolution on that item? Mr. Michaels, Chief Engineer of the Town of Greenwich.
Resolved that the Town of Greenwich grant an easement at Grigg Street parking lot located at Zero Grigg Street, Greenwich, to the Connecticut Light and Power, CLMP. Be further resolved that the First Selectment of the Town of Greenwich is hereby authorized to execute such easements on behalf of the Town of Greenwich.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 10 has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this? Beginning with Peter Berg, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
Evening, Mr. Moderator, fellow members. The Land Use Committee met last Monday night. We had Amy Seibert with us to present this item, our Public Works Commissioner. This is a request for a easement at the Grigg Street parking lot for Connecticut Light and Power to place a, which is placing a generator at a building at 376 Greenwich Avenue. Ms. Seibert noted that due to multiple pipes and cables underneath Greenwich Avenue, there's nowhere within the radius of the building to fit the required generator, so the, the parking lot is the only option to run a line which will go to Arch Street. In exchange for granting the easement, the owner of 376 Greenwich Avenue will pay for repaving of the parking lot, which is valued at $65,000. Moreover, in the case of a future change of use for the parking lot, 376 would be responsible for any costs incurred. Several committee members inquired whether this was an adequate trade-off, since the generator will be adding considerable value to the property. Our vote on this item was 9-0-2. District 6 and 9 abstaining, and District 2 was not present for this item.
Thank you. Arlene Lamazo, Chair of our Public Works Committee.
Mr. Moderator, members and guests, the Public Works Committee met on March 31st to discuss the item, and we were assisted by Jim Michael, the Chief Engineer, and Amy Seibert, the Commissioner. I'm not going to repeat what Peter just said because that's the first part of my, my notes here. The only other thing I would add is that the town reassessed the agreement, the easement agreement, and was not satisfied, and so it went back and revised it. One of the, one of the revisions they thought was important is that town, there was no, let me see, there was no provision that would allow the town to make any changes once this easement and pavement went through, and the town wanted to be able to have the right to make changes, whether it was to move things or build things, but the town would have the right to do that. And some of this may be at the owner's expense rather than the town's. Thank you. Our vote was 10-0-0.
Thank you. Alan Small, Chair of our Transportation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Transportation met with Public Works in joint session, and Ms. Lamazo went through much of our discussion. Transportation voted 8-0-0 with Districts 2, 3, 6 and 9 absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Wells with the report of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
The only thing I'll add to the previous reports is that, and it was pointed out somewhat, but to make it clear, if the easement ever does have to be moved because the town wants to use this property for another use, then the owner of 376 Greenwich Avenue is responsible to pay for the cost of moving the, the wiring, depending on what the circumstances are at that time. Our committee had problems with some of the language in the easement agreement. It seemed to be that the easement agreement was unduly unfair to the town. More specifically, the easement agreement provides that CLMP has a right to erect, maintain, operate and remove poles, crossarms, guys, foundations, cables, including fiber optic and communication cables and other structurally, structures reasonably required by CLMP to transmit electrical current, energy, intelligence, wireless signals and the like. Some committee members felt that the right to transmit intelligence and wireless signals and the right to erect structures might be reasonably required by CLMP could be interpreted to include the erection of cell phone towers. Paragraph 2 gives CLMP the right to transmit wireless signals and other communications of any character. Again, some of the members felt that this might very well include a, a cell phone tower. Paragraph 3 gives CLMP the right to use chemicals to control trees and underbrush. Paragraph 4 gives the CLMP the right to grade and fill the parking lot as necessary to improve their right of way, subject to town approval. Paragraph 6 gives CLMP all surface and subsurface, subsurface rights and all air rights over the easement. Paragraph 8 provides that these rights are permanent and transferable to another entity without any need of consent from the town, and paragraph 8D provides CLMP that they may terminate the use of this easement without abandoning it. All of these concerns led some members of this committee to ask that the town go back to CLMP and see if a better agreement could be obtained. Mr. McLaughlin has been working on this on behalf of the Town Law Department and did in fact send a revised draft dealing with many of our committees concerned last Wednesday, but as of 5:00 this evening, he had not heard back from CLP. So we're at a point now where our committee last Monday evening moved to postpone this item to the June meeting, so some of these matters could be addressed. Our vote on the motion to postpone to the June meeting for the purpose of a substitute resolution being submitted was eight in favor, three opposed, with one abstention.
Thank you. Is there a report from District 7 on this?
Yes.
Valerie Stauffer, Chair of District 7.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members and guests. We took this up at our Thursday evening district meeting, and initially the reports, as you've heard, were very favorable, but then we understood that the very large legal agreement, which went before Legislative and Rules, arrived at the last moment, and they, what little they saw of it caused concern. Among the items, the easement would grant CLMP not only the right to run electrical service through the property, but the right to construct and conduct a broad variety of services, nothing to do with the project for which the easement was sought, such as laying fiber optic and communication cables, the right to conduct, transmit and distribute energy, intelligence, that's the exact word that's used, we're not quite sure what that means, wireless signals, which could be cell towers, lights of what, you know, intensity, and communication of other character, which could be microwave towers or cell towers. There was a lot that just wasn't clear. Right to construct infrastructure for doing any of the above, they would reserve, receive the right to occupy the surface of the property and the subsurface and the airspace above the property. The town would not be allowed to do anything that would interfere with CLMP's activities. The town's right to build on the property is therefore impacted. The rights would last forever, and whether or not CLMP exercises them. That anyone the town might later sell the land to would be bound by them, thus diminishing the market value of the town's land. The right would be exclusive, and the town would not be permitted to do any of the construction of those infrastructures that CLMP could do, or neither could the town grant or sell any third party the right. But CLMP would have the right to assign and all of its rights without town consent. What the town would receive in return for granting CLMP all of these broad, exclusive, permanent rights is negligible compared to the fair market value, just a one-time $65,000 pavement resurfacing job. Our district, the members there, 15 of our members voted unanimously to postpone the item. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wells?
On behalf of Legislative and Rules Committee, move to postpone this to the June meeting.
All right, motion to postpone item 10 to our June meeting is made on behalf of one of our committees and does not require a second. Discussion on the Legislative and Rules Committee and District 7, motion to postpone item 10. All right, we can take a voice vote, this being a procedural matter. All those in favor of postponing item 10 to our June meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion has carried. I do have the results of the vote on the consent calendar items. Those were items 1 through 9, 11, 13 through 19, 21 through 28, 30 and 31. Those in favor, 172; opposed, 0; abstaining, 0. Those items have carried. Item 32 is the next item to come before us. May we have the resolution on that item? David Tice, our Selectman.
Good evening, once again. Resolved that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be a reappointed a regular member of the Board of Parks and Recreation for a term expiring 3/31/17, Scott R. Johnson.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 32 has been moved and seconded. Karen Sodik, Chair of our Parks and Recreation Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members and guests. Our committee was not able to interview Mr. Johnson, he was not available that night. We would like to make a motion. Appointments did, but we've agreed we will make a motion coming from me to postpone him to the June call.
All right, go ahead.
I would like to move that Scott Johnson be postponed to the June 2014 call.
All right, that motion is now before us, having been made on behalf of one of our committees. Discussion, oh, I'm sorry, discussion on the Parks and Recreation Committee, motion to postpone item 32. All right, once again, I'll take a voice vote. All those in favor of the motion to postpone item 32 to our June meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion has carried. Item 33 now comes before us.
Mr. Moderator, I also believe this nomination for Gary Delabate, I believe also he is going to be postponed as well.
Right, so if you could just put it before us and then we'll...
Sure. Resolved that the following named persons nominated by the Board of Selectmen be reappointed a regular member of the Board of Park and Recreation for a term expiring 3/31/17, Gary Delabate.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 33 has been moved and seconded. Candace Garthwaite, Chair of our Appointments Committee.
Mr. Delabate was not available to meet with Appointments. He and I communicated, and we will meet at the end of the month, so therefore, on behalf of the Appointments Committee, I move that item number 33 be postponed to the June meeting.
All right, that motion to postpone item 33 to our June meeting is now before us. All those in favor of the motion to postpone item 33 to our June meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion has carried. Item 34 now comes before us. Peter Tessie, our First Selectman.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Mr. Moderator. Resolved that the Town of Greenwich hereby adopts the following. Ordinance approving this formation of a Regional Council of Governments. The item as it appears on the call.
All right, thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item 34 has been moved and seconded. I will invite all of our, all of the committee representatives that considered this to please come forward, and we'll take you in whatever order you agree. All right, Doug Wells with the Legislative and Rules Committee report.
We took up this item last Monday evening. We had former Sworper Representative Paul Settlemeyer speak on behalf of this resolution. He provided us with the events leading up to the promulgation of this... He provided us with the events leading up to the promulgation of this proposed ordinance, most notably informing us that pursuant to state law, that if the town wants to have a voice in regional planning issues, the Town of Greenwich has really no choice but align itself with another regional planning authority and to thereby create the Western Connecticut Council of Governments. This is pursuant to Connecticut Public Act 13-247 passed last year by our legislature. While some members of our committee were concerned, this appears to be the state's effort to institute county governance. Mr. Settlemeyer is of the opinion that that is not the case. In response to questions whether we should not join the Council of Governments, Mr. Settlemeyer told us that the town's best interest is ensuring that our First Selectman has a seat at the table, that is, ensuring that the Town of Greenwich has a voice in matters of regional import, which are those matters concerning rivers, roads and rails. Mr. Settlemeyer also indicated there is an agreement that the cost to the town for its contribution of dues to the Council of Governments will be $23,000 for the next two years thereafter. The state statute provides that the dues will be paid by the member towns in accordance with a formula to be established by that Western Connecticut Council. While there was some grumbling among our committee members about the state mandate, in the end, it was acknowledged that not much can be done other than to comply with the statute and thereby ensure that the town has a voice in our regional planning issues. We took two votes, one asked a legal order, that vote was twelve-zero-zero. Our vote on the merits was ten in favor, two opposed, with Districts Five and Ten voting against the resolution.
Thank you. Arlene Lamazo, Chair of our Public Works Committee.
Public Works took up this item, and I won't repeat again what Mr. Wells has just shared with you. There were a couple points that Mr. Settlemeyer made to us, which I thought were significant. He went through a list of the accomplishments of SWRPA, that is to say, monies and grants that were issued to the Town of Greenwich for various transportation and traffic projects. One of the ones that he cited, which I thought was important, was a traffic mitigation project, which we're going to do in Greenwich at Arch Street. It is in the budget now, and we're talking about millions of dollars that are coming to Greenwich as a result of SWRPA's activities. In spite of that, he's urging us to join this new council and assured us that we would be getting monies again through this new council. Mr. Tessie warned us that we have to be vigilant with regard to this proposal, because in the future, we don't want this council to morph into a county form of government. And those words were taken to heart, and I would thank him for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Berg with the Land Use Committee report.
Our vote was eleven-zero-zero with District Three absent.
Evening again. The Land Use Committee took this up last Monday. It was presented by John Crery, our Town Administrator, and we also heard from our First Selectman, Peter Tessie. I have nothing to add to the other reports. Our vote on this item was twelve-zero-zero.
Thank you. Karen Saadakkan with the report of our Parks and Recreation Committee.
Paul Settlemeyer visited our committee, and I think all of the facts have already been shared with you. I would just add a couple of minor things. He did emphasize, which you've heard, that he did not perceive that this would become a regional government. Mike Warner, who was acting as alternate from District Three, commented that he thought this new Council of Governments would help to coordinate issues like bridges and bring necessary projects from regions together. Our vote was ten-zero-zero with Districts Two and Ten absent.
Thank you. Alan Small with the Transportation Committee report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Transportation was very lucky to have Paul Settlemeyer as a member during the last few terms, and he kept us up to date on the issues involved with SWRPA as this was progressing. Our committee voted eight-zero-zero with Districts Two, Three, Six and Nine absent.
Thank you. Joshua Brown, Chair of our Education Committee.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members and guests, Education Committee met with the same individuals presenting on this item. Our vote was ten in favor, one opposed, zero abstaining. District Four was absent. Much of the discussion was as covered tonight. The objection was really concerned about how this will potentially foster into more of a county government, more others telling the Town of Greenwich on what to do and how to do it, so ten-one-zero.
Thank you. Alexis Vulgaris with the Health and Human Services Committee report.
Good evening. Paul Settlemeyer presented this item to the Health and Human Services Committee. Much, if not all, of the relevant information has already been presented, so I'll very briefly tell you what our committee discussed and the questions that arose during that presentation. Members of the committee wanted to know historically what types of issues SWRPA had worked on. Mr. Settlemeyer explained that some of the things they had worked on were the traffic light sequence at Exit Three, public bus transportation between Portchester and Stanford, and flight patterns at the Westchester Airport. Another question that was asked was, is membership required or mandatory in the new Regional Council of Governments? It is not mandatory, but Mr. Settlemeyer explained that if we elected not to join, then Greenwich would not have a seat nor a voice at the table of the newly formed council, and that since Greenwich had been a voting member of SWRPA for the last fifty years, it would probably be in our best interest to continue to work in partnership with surrounding municipalities around shared issues. Thus, the majority of members of the Health and Human Services Committee felt that the regional council structure is going to move forward regardless of whether or not Greenwich elects to join, and therefore, it's in the town's best interest to join to continue to have a seat, voice and vote at the table. Our vote was ten-zero-one with District One absent and District Eleven abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you. John Harkins with the Town Services Committee report.
Your Town Services Committee noted that this required a change in the form of regional planning, which the Town Administrator, John Crery, described. A state law mandates a change to regional planning organizations. The Southwestern Regional Planning Association, of which Greenwich is a member, is to be abolished. Several analogous but geographically larger units, the councils on government, will replace it in parallel bodies. We can join one of those COGS or not. Failure to join will put us at a disadvantage in participation with the planning affecting Greenwich as well as access to grants. Approval of this item will permit Greenwich to go forward with the association in a COG with the Danbury area. Mr. Crery assured us that our representatives will continue to monitor the progress and advocate on our behalf, as they have done with SWRPA. The following, the vote was twelve-zero-zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Warner with the Finance Committee report.
Good evening. Your Finance Committee took this item up. We had with us the First Selectman and Paul Settlemeyer. The discussion, we had a lively discussion on how a COG could morph into some sort of a county government. Following that discussion, we voted eleven-one-zero in favor.
Thank you. Discussion on item thirty-four. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item thirty-four, and proceed to poll your delegation. I have the result of the vote on the two combined items. Those were item twenty, the appointment of Mr. Stern to the Claims Committee, and item twenty-nine, the appointment of Mr. Brooks to the Alarm Appeals Board. Those in favor, one-seventy; opposed, zero; abstaining, zero. The two combined items have carried. As item thirty-four was the last item on our agenda, we will need to await the tally of the pending vote before proceeding to adjourn. We have the result of the vote on item thirty-four, the ordinance regarding the Regional Council of Government. Those in favor, one-sixty-six; opposed, eight; abstaining, one. That item has carried. There being no further business to come before the meeting, an absent objection, this meeting stands adjourned upon unanimous consent. Thank you all for coming. Have a safe trip home.